Our gracious heavenly father, we thank you again for giving us the opportunity to come here and do the city's business. We thank you for our city, for Kennet. We thank you for all these council members, our mayor, and everybody that leads our city, the police chief, fire chief, the sheriff, Lord. We ask that you bless them, you provide all their needs, keep them healthy, give them wisdom tonight during this meeting, and just let your presence saturate this room as we go about doing your business for our city. We thank you and we love you. In Jesus's name we pray.
Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have eight things meeting.
Motion.
I can actually accept it. I'd like to comment, ask corrections. I'm present to the line. Any reports, uh, power committee?
You have anything after?
The end of my report was just now, over the weekend, so we'll have the nothing reports at next being finished.
Police committee?
Uh, the only thing that I have on the police committee is a while back, we approved to reimburse the officers that's gone to the police academy in an amount of $1,000. And that's, at the time, that's what it cost, and now it's $1,500. And so, we need to try to get that approved to reimburse them for that academy school.
Actually, then the total cost is like $5,500.
It was $4,000.
Yeah. And, and what we've been reimbursing is $1,000 on first anniversary, $1,000 on the second anniversary, and then $2,000 on third. And it would need to be changed to $1,500 first anniversary, $1,500 in the second anniversary, and $2,500 on the third anniversary.
That's what I'm hearing.
Yeah.
Any options, however?
Well, we have about four officers that would still be under the old plan, and then any of our new officers would be under this new, new plan. Scott Ellison was the first one under the new plan. And that was in, uh...
Thank ordinance.
July.
And that being ordinance. We, because we adopted the personnel policy, we adopted, we didn't adopt a new handbook personnel policy by ordinance for the reason that now we don't have to amend by ordinance. We can do it on...
Each one depends on...
We don't need ordinance.
We can do it, we can do it at the same meeting. We can do it on motion. And I assume that was your motion?
Yes, that is a motion. Having...
I like the motion that we reimburse officers as state.
So that's second?
Second.
Okay.
Motion second, we need further discussion. All papers say aye?
Thank you. As of right now, besides, uh, we lost a police car there the other day, I don't have anything else.
Street committee?
I'm gonna let Randy go through the most of it. I've been, uh, the guy's been battling the heat. Of course, we're all proud of how they've done with the heat and all those issues. Um, I think the stress level right now is, they're pretty good for everybody, trying to get the streets finished up and the things that they find that they didn't know they were gonna find, and that type of thing. But, uh, I think when it's all said and done, when it's all over with, we'll be very happy with the product that we have.
I think we're on target. Hope our citizens can understand and bear with the construction that's going on. Of course, coming to conclusions really looking good, but, uh, there's gonna be quite a bit of disruption for the next few weeks. If you wanna improve, sometimes you gotta go through a little bit of a problem. My name's Steve, he's not here tonight. It's the first day of the month, we don't have the financial numbers we should have for next year. Human resource?
Uh, human resource, we did have a committee meeting this afternoon to talk about the pay structure for the police department. We will continue to have some more meetings about that and come up with something good.
Good.
Yes, sir.
What do we want, board street?
Well, I hope some people have noticed that we are making progress on Washington on both ends of it. We completed the concrete work this afternoon on, uh, Washington to Madison, where we've thrown out basically most of the intersection between Worf and City Light Gas and Water Main to do. And while they were in there, they found that our covert under the street leaking, so we replaced it too. So, that concrete was poured back. And most of the intersection will be opened up tomorrow morning, at least where the asphalt crew can get through. A part of Madison will still be blocked for a couple of days. The asphalt crew came in yesterday, did what we call wedging, put roughly a half inch of course of asphalt down to try to level out a lot of the bumps. And so, in some places, it's not a full half inch, it's basically down to nothing, but they're trying to fill a lot of the voids. They went down to Everett, I believe it went, I don't believe it went to Everett or Walnut now. But then they came back today and laid the main course, the overlay, from College all the way to Everett, and in one lane, on down towards Walnut. Uh, they've still gotta come back and finish some of the intersections, the radiuses, a couple of driveways, uh, to have that section completed. But, weather permitting, uh, there's a chance that they could finish, finish Washington tomorrow, but that chance could possibly take effect tomorrow. Then we immediately move on to Kennet Street and do the wedging down there. So, making, making progress with that. Uh, I understand that, I don't know what a hundred-year anniversary is called, fifty years is called a golden anniversary or whatever. We'll continue to have golden opportunities on Washington even today as we were laying asphalt, running into continued problems, issues that we were trying to overcome as they were laying the asphalt down through there. So, uh, the hundred-year-old street has, has really dealt us a lot of problems and issues that had to be dealt with, some of them at the time, you know, whatever. So, uh, it turned out to be a lot bigger project than what we anticipated. My superman vision, looking before we hit the asphalt, played one, so, it was pretty surprised us. Knuckle Brothers has finished the northbound lane of North Main in front of the post office up to Prenters Alley, board that yesterday. They'll come back next Monday and start working on the west side, excuse me, west side in front of the post office, where we did the sidewalk up next to the opera house. We're not doing the sidewalk in front of the post office. It's satisfactory, it's not broken up. Uh, we'll do any, we didn't tear up any curb there, we'll repair it, but we won't be planning on taking the sidewalk out over there on that side. But that's as far as we're going this year. And we've already been asked why we're not going all the way up to College, and the contractor gave me a round ball figure, they, they didn't measure it, put on that type of stuff. They said we're, I only need about $155,000 of round ball figures to go from there up to Main Street, I mean, to College up to Main Street, where it's five lanes wide. So, we'll put those figures down for next year and possibly look at them and see where we stand with that. Uh, that, that's an expensive endeavor. Uh, we'll continue to have problems with grass blowing in the streets, not just off the edge of the mower, people mowing from their yard, and we're even blowing it all the way out continually. We had to clean Washington twice yesterday because of somebody who was doing it while we were trying to work, while they were trying to put their Tacoco oil down, and then, uh, once today, we caught somebody and stopped them before they got it all out on the street. But, uh, so 2009, then Mayor Healer sent out a letter through, uh, City Light Gas and Water mailing, uh, where we could put a paper in there, because it was going out an envelope then, advising the residents not to do that. But that's 2009. And we've got a lot of new people in Kennet. Uh, we've probably got some new contractors doing yard work and stuff like that. Uh, we do have an ordinance covering that, it's a nuisance ordinance, uh, but, you know, I would encourage what we can to get support from the news media and from you all to advise people that we don't need to do that because, uh, it's causing problems, not only with the construction, but also with the storm and rain system. On the report, uh, you can see that, uh, we've been working short a number of days because of the number of vacations. Uh, there were kids ahead of time, either children of their own or grandchildren, trying to get vacations in before school started. Uh, we pretty well can even say, uh, contractors on that panel. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Come here, Paul.
No, I'll be next, man.
Please?
I thought you said Department, I'm sorry. Some reason I didn't reach for it.
Just a few short things. Last week, myself and Diana covered from City Light and Water, went to the conference. It was a great conference, a lot of legal updates, a lot of liability issues, we discussed a lot of stuff. Also, the, you know, police department was awarded 100% participation, and, uh, I'm very proud of that. It's very hard to get to accomplish to be 100% within a year. Uh, last Tuesday in the morning, uh, one of our police cars was out on the truck, that has somebody on a bravery belt, in the rear around the battery area called the fire. Uh, all the officers were okay, or they probably told, one was already in contact, they were aware of it. Lost the radio in that, so that's gonna be some issues with that. And I'll say until we get our cameras and our radar out, we don't really know until we get and clean that and get it back up for some factor. See how those are, like I said, we're already in contact, they said they'll work with it, so if that time we know something, I'll get back with it as far as, what we can do to replace it or at least send it. Other than that, everything's good. All the guys been working hard. Like, as my farmer says, it's been very hot, worked there, about 22 pounds of extra weight on it for the best, you know, and all that and left it. So, try to keep everybody hydrated, so probably not any medical issues, but, like I said, everybody's working hard, I'm proud of it. Any questions?
There's been a block in the news about these Ford...
Ford, yes.
...having coming off that issue. Are we...
We've not had any at all. We're keeping in contact with the dealerships, and of course, they're keeping in contact with their technical and engineering people, and they're trying to find out and sort of isolated down in Texas, and what some of them are saying, it's still in the early phases of it, that when they're putting in the equipment, the radials and stuff, they're not sealing all the hose when they're drilling and everything, so that might be where some fumes are coming from. So, yeah, we're keeping an eye on it, and, uh, that's the latest on it, as far as the installation of what they're doing, and it seems like it's just isolated. We are keeping an eye on it.
Josh?
Yes?
Do we know what contributed to this? Do we have any idea? Because we have a lot of these cars, so it may not be a bad idea to try to figure out what caused this, so we can avoid this.
Sorry, yes, sir, I'm on top of that. It looks like the battery's possibly shorted out, or the radio is almost 100 degrees that day, and it's back, the batteries are back in the rear compartments now. Uh, I've already checked the dogs, they've not had any problems with this issue, so sometimes things just happen, but yeah, we're still looking into it.
Well, like I said, you know, we, we have a few of these, and...
Well, I've got quite a few of them, we'll get some more. But yeah, I'll keep on top of that, yeah, as soon as I can find out for sure if you can find out.
Well, that's what I didn't know.
Essentially located in just that one area.
Okay. I didn't know if there's a mechanical issue, or electrical, or...
So far, it looks like it's electrical.
I did have a phone call thanking us for our quick responses on an attempted break-in or something like that.
Thank you. Well, what it's worth, like the city clerk got a phone call the other day. We're starting to get a lot of citizens calling in. We usually get a lot of, uh, not-so-good reports on officers, but here lately, it seems like everything's been coming towards the officers and what they can do to help, so that makes me feel good knowing we are out there, you know, supposed to. You know, just being the nation, a lot of work, and, uh, we do have step on toes, but a lot of negativity we do get, warranted or not warranted, but when people do wanna call them, take the time out to say thank you, that's really appreciating, and they feel very good about it also. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Just a reminder, on the front of August, the party was, uh, meeting scheduled, and hopefully the community will turn out for it, much to the remote flow. We really need their input, not just for the problems, but also hopefully for solutions. We're forward to...
Six.
The meeting, six o'clock, six o'clock. Do you have bids for this?
Okay, since we are trying to cut expenses everywhere that we can, we did place bids for our trash services and for the janitorial service here at City Hall. So, on the responses back, um, okay, Par's Containers, they only responded on the dumpsters out at the compost, and, um, Friendly Waste made their bid on all of our buildings, not the compost. They said they would partner with Par Container. And then we have a bid from Republic Services, who are actually out of Dexter, and they have the lowest bid.
How much?
No, um, this is for a couple of days before I look at it, let me see. On our buildings, Republic is 426, and Friendly Waste is 468. But on the, um, with the compost on here, um, Republic was gonna end up being 806, and so it was gonna be about $120 less than Friendly and Par Containers.
A year or a month?
A year.
A year?
If it's a year, I'd rather go local.
I'm about to say, I think I've...
I thought it was a month. It's a month.
I mean, I'm not...
It's about the month. Oh, it's about the month, that's why I was... That's pretty cheap, it's 100, 800 dollars. I mean, it's certainly a dollar.
$1,800 a year.
A month.
$1,800 a year?
I don't know, just gonna...
Yeah, that's monthly.
Yeah, but...
Let's just give it 460.
Yeah, I'm sorry, it was monthly, I guess. Sorry.
So, it's 150, 160 a month?
120, not really, yeah.
Over 1,400.
So, $1,400.
Okay, 1,400 a month total between the four...
For the year, the difference of a year.
Oh, 1,400.
Yeah.
$1,400, $1,400.
Yeah, but I'd, I'd rather stay with our local.
Me too.
We want people to buy in Kennet, we need to buy in Kennet.
I agree.
I want you to say if I match it. If it matches, call them, say if they'll match it.
Yeah.
Table that way? Table that way?
Can I do that? Ask them to match.
We checked, we called in. Now, now, we're setting ourselves up for law speed. I mean, we do that, we're setting ourselves up, we're...
It's not a true bid, that's true.
So, really, you just need to make a motion to stay local, if that's what you're wishing to do.
Sure, that's what we think, but, uh, I'm, I'm, if that touch difference, I mean, we're talking, we're not talking 10%, we're talking about 20% difference, and that's... Is there anything wrong with dealing with Councilman Hunter's head? To go back and...
Yeah, yeah, we had sealed bids, we, we asked for sealed bids, and then we come back and open the bids, and then go back to somebody else we like, somebody local, and say, how can you match the lowest bid?
I can't do that.
So, I'm, I'm, see that?
Well, I make a motion, we accept the public bid.
I don't...
I think it's $1,400 a year.
I get that, but I agree with...
Offside is for purposes of dissection.
Yeah.
All right. You can re-go sit in on your...
I get it, but, I think it's a who's to shop locally.
No, I'm accepting.
Your obligation is to accept the lowest and best bid.
Oh. I thought you could take one of them.
You're obviously taking the lowest and best.
Well, now, wait, that's it, lowest and best.
Yeah, I make a motion, please, I'm talking about like...
Second.
With that much difference, you're kinda asking for litigation if you don't take the lowest with, with that much, if it was five, you know, five or $10.
Purpose of it being sealed and the purpose of us taxing for bids is to get the lowest to go with it.
We have a motion in the second on the floor to accept the public bid in further discussion. All papers say aye?
Aye.
opposed? Most of you agree?
We can always put out for a bid next year. Now, on the janitorial services for City Hall, we only received one bid, and that is the bid from Wake's Cleaning that is doing the job anyway, and, um, he increased his amount from 485 to 585. But he says that they have been doing the work here for several, several, several years and have not asked for an increase, so...
This is for one, Ron.
This is the only one we got.
Are they doing a good job?
They have, I think there are room for improvements, and we're talking about those.
And that's just for this facility?
Mm-hmm. But it's coming in every day, and at least once on the weekend. I mean, we, we receive no other bids.
That's who does my planning.
Delegate it out to their employees.
That's also, right now, they come in da... No, right now, they come in daily, plus once on the weekend, but that's not what the bid was for. The bid was for less time.
The bid was for three days, but in talking to him, if they can't get it done in three days, then they'll have to go back to the five days, plus a weekend. What's the basis? Mm-hmm.
You got, you got a couple of options here. You can accept the bid that we have, you can reject the bid, and advertise again.
I would, I recommend that we reject that bid, and...
How long's it been that he's, since he's had a price of rate increase?
He hasn't.
Anybody remember them not doing it? So, we're talking, he's probably been 20 years.
Well, 10 plus, at least.
When, when he called in that day to find out about the bid, he said they had not, they had never done an increase.
You're talking over 20 years.
Over 20, he's coming down.
Was the rate going back to just three days?
Well, when I put the bid out, I thought we might be able to be less than what they were doing it for now by cutting down the days. But, um, they've never asked for an increase.
Okay.
So, Nick says to reject the bid.
Yeah, that's a informed motion, uh, outside we reach out for more, you know.
Second.
Second.
Second. All papers say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
We're going to raise hands.
She needs to get a count here. If you're for it, raise your hand, please.
For it.
For it.
For it, this is rejecting the bid.
For rejecting the bid.
Okay. And for not rejecting the bid. Okay, so five to three.
The motion is to not reject it, but we have a motion to accept the bid.
Motion to accept the bid. Reject it.
And second.
I say...
All papers say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No. They're doing for 20 plus.
In the package, you have Seals and Edges, payable for June. We should say it.
All papers say aye?
Aye.
We should agree. We have, uh, Delany Dennis's terms up at the Airborne Board. This is three times around for these up here. So, you said three terms, you have to do all the due at this point. I'd recommend the Department of Law and Prosecution, the Airborne Board, this would be a four-year term that expires August 2021.
Motion.
Second. Question of the discussion. All papers say aye?
Aye.
I'm gonna comment out here tonight, as you're all well aware, that we've got the election next Tuesday. Three tax issues on the ballot, one is the county asking for a half percent increase in taxes. One is our use tax. This will position, get it to dissipate in the revenue that's being paid in to the state by people like Amazon. If it does not pass, money will remain with the state to, to, to give this portion of it. Third issue, of course, is a half cent, one eighth of senior services, three eighths goes for stormwater. Stormwater portion is the issue that, going on today is, if it comes up, seems like, we tend to, we've got an issue right now, water being dumped in the street, that has to stop, and the initial estimate to fix that is about $25,000. That swimming pool is where this, the, uh, what has been discharged down the street, if that continues, we have to take samplings of that water, we have to go to a lab and get lab reports. It can go into the sanitary sewer, but it has to be tapped in, and that's about an eight-inch line that comes down, swimming pool, going into the sewer line. So, it's gonna be a pretty good project, the sewer line's nine foot in ground. A lot of fun trying to work down and tie in that kind of metal, so, that's a mission problem. This is actually a park board problem, but, uh, this is part of the work, part of the city, is part of us, and, uh, we're involved. But that's prime example, and Randy contains some horror stories up and down Washington Street, of things that he's run into with leaks and pipes, et cetera. I'm hopeful that we're gonna get turnout of supporters for the election. If you don't support it, please don't show up. But, uh, we really need that. At this stage, we're hoping to feel for... Uh, at this stage, we'll hopefully build for public comments, and then we invite the best counsel.
Sure.
Your name?
I, seriously, I don't know. Uh, hey, on the stormwater thing, uh, actually someone dropped off at the office about a month ago and it was a newspaper clip and it talked about stormwater drainage and sidewalks and all on St. Francis Street from nineteen forty-eight under John, under Mayor Carson. Somebody had gone through there and it was like, hey, I think Dr. Wayne liked this, they brought it by and I left it at the office, but yeah, that's the city notes that night were for, they were talking about the sidewalks and stormwater and what the city was going to do about it back in nineteen forty-eight.
You make us feel good, we haven't been able to hear that one.
So, uh, but yeah, so this has been a problem all along, but on a good note, uh, Tuesday night, Wednesday night, Tuesday night, Wednesday, uh, myself and Noble, I had gotten a, uh, group text message from Mitzi Bell and the C D B G Grant Group, uh, committee has asked if somebody from Kennet would come to the workshop tomorrow and Thursday, that they only had to show up one day, but they would like somebody from Kennet to show up and nobody knows the project better than myself or Noble and Noble couldn't make it and I, so I told him I can go on Thursday. Uh, so, um, Mitzi has me down, she has said that it's, she goes, by the, the group asking you to show up, this is a very good, she goes hint, 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 shows you're on the short list. So, uh, hopefully that's what it means, um, but, you know, if you're asking somebody to give you five hundred thousand dollars and they tell you to come, you, there you go. So, um, I figure I'll probably go up Wednesday night because registration starts at eight, eight o'clock, the meeting starts at nine, so it's either, it's at the, is that Jeff City at the Thomas?
Jeff City is fine.
Okay. Uh, some meeting building right beside the Capitol. I had to look back, uh, she sent me the itinerary, the address and all that. Um, and, uh, so, I figured if, if you're asking the, the committee to give you five hundred thousand dollars and they say, hey, can you come and talk to us, uh, you tend to go. So, uh, instead of getting up at three o'clock in the morning, we'll leave it at three thirty to be there by eight o'clock, uh, when I go up the night before and, uh, be there in time, uh, and, uh, we at nine o'clock. And so, but, so hopefully it's, like I said, hopefully that means we're on the short list and, uh, um, we're things headed in the right direction.
All right, good job. Thank you.
Yeah. But this is something we built with him and stuff.
Is there any kind of compensation?
Okay, I appreciate that.
Okay, no, I just wanted to make sure, we appreciate everything you've done.
Do you have a reservation or anything yet?
No, not yet. Uh, that it's, uh, I hadn't, actually I hadn't thought about that, that's John Thiner out at church camp today and everything else, it's like, I need to make that while I was out there and...
That you're talking about leaving tonight?
No, no, I'm not going to leave till tomorrow night after work.
Okay, Wednesday night.
Yeah, I'll stay Wednesday night.
Will that you are in for Wednesday night?
If you can send a copy of the itinerary, so we'll, I mean, not that, but where you're supposed to be at.
Okay.
We can get you something close.
Okay, all right, I'll, uh, I'll drop it off to you and then...
Capital Plaza.
Capital Plaza is going to be closest.
Capital Plaza?
Well, what's the other one there?
Double Tree, I think. That is around one there.
One of those.
Not a whole lot closer, right, or? But, uh, um, but is it the Thomas Building or Jefferson Building?
Thomas, Jefferson.
Oh, it's, she listed off the name and it's, uh, like I said, it's on the itinerary, the Truman Building, it, it was, but she said it's right beside the, uh, the Capitol Building and since I have it all printed out, it's...
Across the street from it, so.
All right, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else like to address the Phils? Motion going to closed session?
Motion.
Second.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Yes.